It's 5:30. I'll call the media, the Ramsey County Commission to order. We'll start off by, President Regent, please.
President Regent, to the fight of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner, Chairman Leipon is joining us via online. So he asked me if I would take over and run the meeting. So we'll start off with the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve or second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Approval of the agenda, any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
Move to second to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. We have a hearing on appraisal at 5:45. We continue on with Kevin Fieldson's report.
Well, they did finish putting that base on in the backdrop now, so that's pretty much done. Looks really good. It's really hard again, so I hope anybody got chance to drive over. Guys over at Sun here are really in this condition. So they did a good job there.
Did they get it done? What, did they hope that they got it done?
They put some more base on it than those soft spots. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Wednesday. So maybe Thursday, they finished.
Really? I was over it, but it getting dark. I didn't want it soft spot.
What day was that?
I think it was Wednesday.
It was real rough and potly out, and they got to back out of there. I noticed that.
Yeah.
I noticed that too.
Do you think we're ready for pavement? Have we decided to do that?
Well, we said if we decided to pave it, we're supposed to put another lift of gravel on. So yeah, that's what I mean.
But the base, you think, is all right?
Yeah, I do. It's really hard to that section now. About two places are little whoopin' and other areas. Pretty good, it's pretty hard. Eventually we'll get those little... It's like a wheel depression or something, but don't need like three feet long or something like that.
Do you think our shoulders are up, or are they out, fourth knee?
Yeah, pretty much. We're wider than it used to be, so I think if anything, not bad for us. Should be wide shoulders.
Yeah. You better widen out.
Yeah, you do. About five feet, at least, I think.
Really?
Yeah. Started out at 26 feet, now it's up to about 32.
Each way?
Yeah, well, total.
Total, yeah.
But what do we do then? If we decide to ask, well, we're going to bring up another tire suspension, so the wider shoulders are.
Adam, can you hear us?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Are you on it?
I haven't driven it yet since they've finished up, no, I haven't.
I was on it Sunday, and it was in good shape. I was kind of late for coaching and was speeding. I shouldn't probably admit that, but, well, I was going to speed on it, let's put it that way. And I didn't have any issues or bothers or notice, and I went back the same way, so I thought it was in good shape. Lot better than it was.
Now, Wednesday had a lot of, like you were riding on a roller coaster or something. You've had a couple of these, but a lot of them were going this way. They got close on.
It was dark enough that I couldn't see if they had that dip pulled up, but it is pulled up.
Yeah, they were made distant brown, they were not black, they were black in place.
I thought I could see it out, my.
Okay.
Anything else, say, were you on there?
I was, I was side by side, not really very comparison. But it was definitely better than it was a week, 10 days ago, absolutely.
All right, moving on, we got the invoice from the spot, and I'll go get on Sopers on Ramsey Highway. We got about 200 yards of gravel from them, and that cost $2,550. Just like a motion.
So move. Second.
The move in second to pay the invoice from Sopers for the gravel, $2,550. Roll call, please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Okay, and the post did haul some 150 yards of gravel into our stockpile at the yard, the shop. And that invoice was $7,212.50.
Move to approve, second. Move to approve the invoice for calls for the gravel. Roll call, please.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Lager on coast, Kevin. One of his men was out with my yard the other day, and they told me that they took some gravel into the car and shop, right? And that's got that high clay. Really gets hard?
What?
Really gets hard?
Really gets hard, hard, still hard.
And we used all that?
Nope, we just, but we put it in those soft spots on the floor.
You did?
Yeah, we did.
Melted?
Uh, I haven't melted since the stone, but I mean, the day we did it, it burned up real nice.
It did?
Since when we got the moisture, I haven't melted there, so. And normally with that high clay, high temp, the moisture, not, we'll see, I mean, it just has to be playing back and forth if that's off.
What about seven, are we going to do that? Do you guys need some of that?
No, it's not near as bad as four, though. We had some washboards and loose gravel, but those soft spots are pretty much healed up on that one.
They are?
Yeah. Now, the ones on four were really noticeable, I mean, you couldn't even miss it.
Yeah.
Put it out to get around, type of thing.
They're pretty good now.
I have, but not as much as, right, there's like this hole. This week, I have, we did it last Thursday.
I'm going to agree. Okay.
Uh, we had a change order for Ramsey County due at Elk Drive. There's no cost or time extension associated with the change order, but the change order was to make sure there was no technology, no communication devices, no computers on the equipment they were using, manufactured by certain companies. And there wasn't, so we were fine there. But we had to do all the paperwork to sign the change order. So I guess I need motion for me to sign the change order. I've never seen one of these before, but possibly some company out there manufacturing computer equipment that.
Was it Huawei?
No. No, it would have been like on their.
Huawei? Huawei, I mean, the United States has basically banned Huawei in, because it's basically a front with the Chinese government. It's not the only company I can think of that.
That sort of was, that type of happened to our knowledge, so.
Move to approve, second. The move in second to allow Mr. Fieldson to be responsible for the change order and take care of signing that. All in favor, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
One more thing, I had low pass, when we talked about that in the last meeting, we talked about the winter time permits where they have an issue for 30 days at a rate of 50, 100, or $150. We opted to go with a whole season for $50. And they can't do that on their software program, so we have two options. We can completely opt out of that on the low pass program, we just sell them ourselves, or we can go with their rate of $30 versus $50 for a 30-day period. 60-day period is $100, and 90-day period is $150.
We better just do it ourselves.
Then we need to have motion for that to love to change our own motion, so.
Second.
The move in second that we amend our motion for the low pass agreement. Is that right? Okay, any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. COVID-19 discussion. Adam, did you have anything that you wanted to share or bring up?
Uh, I guess the only things I would bring up. Uh, I was in on a meeting this morning through Microsoft Teams with the governor and lieutenant governor, their staffs, and then 14, the mayors of the 14 largest cities, plus the county commissioners of the 14 large, where those cities lie in, talking about, you know, how things are going, concerns, questions. Lot of discussion there. Mayor Johnson from Devil's Lake was on as well, and I thought it was good discussion. Obviously, there's a lot of things going on right now, huge numbers these last few days. Fargo and Minot last night, both went to mask mandates. Neither of them have any enforcement portion of the policy. They're just trying to reiterate that they feel it's important, essentially. West Fargo, they said something about they're going to have a discussion about it at a meeting tomorrow. So just so you know what's going on in the state more than anything. From the local front, we have a meeting coming up on Friday at 2:00 p.m. And it's going to be myself, the mayor, and then representatives from, I believe, the school board, maybe the superintendent of schools, Lake Ridge State College representatives, and other people from the community that are business leaders and things of that nature, to discuss how essentially we can try to avoid Ramsey County and our community here in Devil's Lake, as well as, you know, our surrounding communities, from moving from that yellow level we're at currently up to the orange or the red, you know, let's try to nip it in the bud as best we can. You know, just, there's a lot of concern out at the colleges, the ones that got this together. There's a lot of concern from their perspective that we don't, we try to stop it before it escalates more than it has already in our community. And, you know, obviously, our numbers are going up percentage-wise. We haven't been tracking as bad, I don't believe, as some of the larger communities. And our sheer numbers, obviously, are less just because we have less people, but it's still a concern. So I guess we'll see what comes out of that meeting. I would assume we'll just remind people, one of the things that will be discussed is reminding people, obviously, you know, stay in touch, your hand, you know, wear masks, all of those things that we've been harping on for seven months. And we're going to have to try to get ahead of this because it's starting to get away from us, I think, unfortunately. So I guess I'll bring back to the commission whatever comes of that meeting, and I'm sure it'll be in the news when it's done, if there's anything that comes from it. So other than that, the only other thing I would say is I did have a discussion with Candy this morning just visiting with her about things that we have coming up in the memorial building. And she's on board just in saying we're going to have to stay on, you know, keep the people that happen rent. And I believe there's just one event coming up right now, other than, obviously, the election. So just kind of keep the people that happen to rent for that one date in the loop, simply because if we do move from a yellow to an orange, or we're lucky we moved to the other way, back to a green, that would change the percentages and how many people we could have in the memorial building. So we're going to have to kind of keep an eye on that and how we're going to want to, you know, handle the memorial building going forward. But just something to keep in the back of your minds about making decisions today or anything. Other than that, that's about all I have, is to stay out of COVID, I think. There's operations in the courthouse are still operating. We've had some people that have had to quarantine, so it's just kind of continue to go on. And I guess at this point, I'm glad we decided to go back to by appointment only because the numbers just keep tracking up. So hopefully, we can turn this the other way.
Great, thank you, Adam. And I do think that being at the college is a community conversation is how it's, how it reads. So I think that would be open to anybody that would want to attend with the commission at 2 o'clock at the auditorium, or it's virtually on Microsoft Teams. With that, I think it's hearing time. So do we need to adjourn this meeting and go into the hearing, or? No? No? Okay, we'll just have the hearing on the appraisal of the property, for core property. That's included in your packets. So nobody's here, you just need to go ahead and approve this, that these properties will be up for for auction on the 6th of November, correct?
November 7th, 3rd Tuesday.
Oh, okay. 3rd Tuesday in November. Gotcha.
I have to have it published by the 6th.
Published by the 6th. Gotcha. Perfect.
Second.
The move in second that we have approved the appraisal list for delinquent property. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by the same aye.
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 Both same side. Motion carries.
Just so you know, when we started out with this list, we had 30-plus properties, and we got it down to four.
Fantastic, so thank you, Candy and staff, so great job. Continuing on with unfinished business, property nuisance issue, nuisance property issue. Carrie, you have a.
So the only updates I have for the enforcement of the city organizations regarding nuisance. The city attorney is still looking into it. I did speak with him or hear back from him yesterday that he is still looking into it on the nuisance aspect. I know the sheriff's office has been involved in looking out there, didn't report anything alarming. And public health, I think, is also working on their end. Whether or not they'll do anything beyond the initial reports, I don't know yet.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss on that? Adam, did you have anything that you'd like to mention on the nuisance property issue?
Nope, not at this point.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? Going down to new business, approved city of Devil's Lake build for the West End levee. I think that's $19,135,99. That's built quarterly. Need a motion to approve that?
About a couple of years ago, I had an idea this was going to go away.
Yeah, I thought Holden's office had a press release about that. And during budget discussions, I contacted Holden's office, and they said they'd look into it. And I would need to hear back from them, so I'm not sure if we got... Didn't it also be panels of Congress or? But yeah, it was certainly nice at the moment. We take that over and $20,000 every quarter. How many mill are we, are we here on?
Was it city share?
Uh, county share is 30%, Mr. Yon.
Was that a legislative action or a water mission?
That's a, it's a federal, the Yon's, Board of Engineers. They come through some sort of federal.
I think Kramer's the one who get it over. Because the, I remember I was high camp, I was telling everybody that this was going to get taken care of by the Fed. But she got beat. I don't know, I think I gave it out the door.
Hope not, but.
I think we should probably get a little Kramer.
We could look into it.
Do you remain, I don't want to.
Move to approve the bill for the West End Dyke. City of Devil's Lake, do we have a second?
Aye.
Move in second, any further discussion?
Relax, just a moment.
If not, all in favor, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Site authorization approval.
Move to approve, second.
Move consecutively. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by the same aye.
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 Both same side.
Jeff?
Yeah?
Well, I apologize, I thought you were finished.
No. Mr. Bond?
I was just going to ask him a question.
Yeah?
On the Dyke payment, are we actually cutting that check, or are we just approving it? Is, should we roll call that just to make sure we're right?
I think it's just an approval, isn't it? So we should do, we're rolling call, we are paying it. Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were better and it's correct.
Okay, we'll go back. Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
And Britt?
Aye.
Now, motion carries. Thank you, Adam. Sheriff Nelson?
Well, I shouldn't take that. With the adding of people, I need to start moving ahead with what orders. So I finally got my bid yesterday from Ford, but I didn't have time to get too many. But I got one Dodge one from Ford. Dodge was 3,000, 30,400 for their angle. Ford was 34,000 something for their pickup. And the Dodge pickup was 30,900, I think. So it's Dodge product, whatever we go. But I need to pull out, I guess, I want to get, get orders. So we can get them here, hopefully get, along those lines, because I need to start ordering equipment to have here. I have two new deputies start in January, I can't have them out of the car. And that's kind of the push this year, which is never been before.
I thought the two new deputies here can't be here post-horm.
Yeah.
No.
But I'm replacing, I'm using the two new ones for them.
Oh.
I'm not replacing two this year.
Yeah.
But I have to have two.
Okay, gotcha.
So I'm sorry if that was, just understanding. We can get by, but I mean, well, the first whole month is going to be OJT anyway, so. But normally, we don't order until December, they don't get here till May. So I want to get it done a little sooner.
You think they're available?
What?
They're available?
Yeah, I talked to them, for them. They said they should be here sometime in December, hopefully.
But is that in 2021 budget?
I talked to them about that, and they agreed that they could maybe hold off till August until January. Because I'm concerned about that as well, that, yeah. But along with that, I've got to order radios, I just got the bid for that before I came here. Which is, it's well over $2,000. But I've got to get stuff ordered because they're saying the order time is eight to 12 weeks, which puts us already in two, end of December. Get everything over, right? So we kind of see where I'm, then I got to schedule getting it solved, going to get a cage to order. And I just like to be able to go ahead and start ordering the stuff I need.
Move to approve, second.
Any motion for all of?
We're not paying for anything, we're just ordering, we're just getting ready.
No, I understand that. I'm just asking if it is one motion for, or they give us a new radio now, and we can't wait.
Like I said, some of the stuff is going to be more than $2,000, but I just want to go back, go back every time that.
No, I know, I just want to know.
Like the light bars, just above $2,000. So just the light bar per car, yeah. So that'd be another time, I'm sure, you know, we get approval here, so.
You can get them if they're easy to get old?
No, yeah, we can order them, but they're, everything should be here by tonight, is what they're saying. But there might be a hiccup here and there with all the transportation problems. And that's why they're saying eight to 12 weeks. Which would put us right about the end of December, which is the right moment to get them, but that's our order.
We don't have to pay for this, but I have to.
No, and I made that perfectly fair with all the vendors, like this wouldn't be available until January. Thanks for our agree.
You also have to get a cage and have that installed.
I have to order it. But I have to, I have to know what vehicle they can order before I can order the cage, because there are vehicles considered there as well. Kind of, that's why the hurry tonight, I was just going to start getting the okay, so I have to get one.
Well, that brings me up to a kind of a parliamentarian issue is, it's not on our agenda. And so can, is this something that we can we vote on?
We're not spending any money.
Well, I realize that, but. We, we can, we.
Go back to the previous.
Previous minutes and.
Go back to the previous motion to put the agenda.
Oh.
Add him to the agenda.
Okay. I think, I would feel more comfortable if we did it now.
I just didn't want to wait two more weeks, so.
I completely understand that, but we should, we should go ahead and add you to the agenda. And if that would be okay with the.
I'll make the motion to add you to the agenda.
Okay.
And you second the addition still?
Yeah, that's right.
Don't worry, talk.
Well, that's, I understand.
But that's all paid on the other day when I got that second bid in, if I didn't, you know, before I even could answer, so.
Adam, are you comfortable with that?
I believe, if I'm understanding correctly, we're just basically making a friendly amendment to change the agenda, to add the sheriff, so that we can, we can vote on this, then, correct?
Correct, so we can have this discussion and properly vote.
Okay. So what's on the table right now is, is we're voting to amend the agenda.
Correct.
Okay. I invited it.
All right, all in favor of amending the agenda to add Sheriff Nelson, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Motion carries, so now we can go ahead and approve the motion for, Commissioner Brown had the approval for the Sheriff Nelson going ahead with his bid or his. for the Sheriff Nelson going ahead with his bids or his purchases. Right? That's what it was, right? Purchases.
Order. Orders, yeah.
Choose, choose which one to order.
Well, the guys all wanted their angles, so. And basically, when I'm looking at these bids, what's gonna be the best value per county? And what's the best use wise, whether it be, you know, if the pickup was three thousand dollars lower, we'd do that pickup, just because it's lower price. But they're so close, I mean, they're four hundred dollar park teams, I don't know why, but.
And Commissioner Olson, you're still second that motion?
Yep, yep.
Carrie?
I apologize for that.
Well, that's-
You're welcome.
So we have the motion and a second, some of us do allow Sheriff Nelson to go ahead with the orders for the new equipment. Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the beginning of the order? Any visitors online, Steve? No?
No.
Mr. Lightpon, do you have anything else?
The only thing I would mention is I, I went to the A and S meeting last week and sat through that. We also, Representative Westland as well as Senator Elkie were there as well. It's, it looks like the more feedback they're, anyway, but it's fleshed out very well. So we essentially, Nelson County and Benson County didn't have anybody there. If this is supposed to be a deal where we're all in it together, well, then they need to have representation at the table too. So Mr. Brackner, Brackner, I can never remember how to say his name, so I apologize, was going to go ahead and continue to work with them. And I said, it's not that we're not interested, we think this might be a good idea, but we need far more answers than we have now. And they're gonna need some long-term funding, not just to put the stations in place, but to help offset the costs of maintenance and everything else that goes with it, on top of the fact that who's going to, I mean, they want to go with the low-pressure stations, it sounds like, so they won't have to man them, so you won't have a labor issue probably, but you're still gonna have ongoing costs plus on top of the fact of, I mean, there's still boats gonna be going in the lake even after snow. So how are we going to handle it in the fall and in the early spring? There's a lot of unanswered questions, but I think it's still something we can, we can stay in communication about. But at this point, there's nothing really to report other than there's still need to come up with a plan that's more thoroughly vetted, let's put it that way.
Adam, did our legislators understand that, that that's what we're remuneration about is the money?
Yeah, yeah, and I reiterated that at the meeting. I said, the problem we're gonna run into is, is, you know, I said, none of us on the commission, I think, are against not trying to protect the lake from getting nuisance species in it. Of course, we're all in favor of that, we know that it's an economic driver for the community, but we can't possibly sign up to support something when we don't know how much it's gonna cost, we don't know how much game and fish is going to continue to help support the program other than to put the station in wherever they're gonna put the stations. We don't know how many stations on we've looked at. You know, and without an ongoing appropriation through whether it's game or fish running the appropriation or them running it through locals, you know, subdivisions like the county or maybe through something like the Lake Access or Lake Region Angles or something like that, you know, we just, we can't possibly sign up for it not knowing what it's gonna cost us. So, you know, and they need an ongoing appropriation is what it comes down to, and it's gonna be difficult for them to get it. The one thing that I think they probably will try to do is, and I think it's a reasonable thing, is go to places like the state parks where they have really busy boat ramps, and they'll put them in there at least, and that would be a good start. But they're gonna try to come up with some more answers and then they'll get back to us. But yeah, I think, I think the legislators were pretty aware that we just wanted to know what we were signing up for, what the cost is gonna be, because putting it all on the back of property taxes probably doesn't make a lot of sense.
Adam, did I, did I hear a mention of local spin in the game? So they do want some sort of local buy-in, whether it be a county or some other political
Yeah, I think, I think they want local buy-in. I don't know what they necessarily mean by buy-in. All of it has to be money, and it has to be also that, you know, essentially, somebody's going to have to look after these stations, you know, I mean, if they're, even if they're unmanned, you still have to have somebody go check on them, make sure the water's okay, make sure the maintenance is done. So there's got to be somebody local that's going to essentially corral that and make sure it works, because game and fish apparently doesn't have the manpower to do it. Well, I don't think that's necessarily something we can't handle through somebody like, like Lake Access or something to make it function. But until we know how many we're talking about and the ongoing cost, and they flush that out, and I just don't know how we're gonna be able to sign up for it other than to say we're still interested, but you gotta give us some tighter numbers.
Exactly right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
One more question, Adam. Did you feel the legislators were probably gonna bring it up during the session to try to get something through the session to finances or get a better app on it?
I honestly couldn't tell you either way. It sounded to me like they thought trying to get anything with new money appropriated through the session was gonna be awfully difficult. But they did realize that it is not necessarily a bad idea, but I couldn't tell you either which way if they felt that they would be able to, to bring it up in a separate bill or something like that. But, you know, there were some things brought up, like, you know, we could reallocate things like it, and there are things that make some sense. For instance, gas tax that's collected when people fill boats goes to their own fund. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but it does, that's just how it functions. Maybe they could reappropriate some of those over and use it for things like A and S, but I believe Senator Elkie said something to the, you know how long that's been like that? How hard that'll be to change essentially. So a single appropriation through a single bill is probably the way they would have to do it. I don't know if they have any interest in doing so or not. And I think they believe that the issue's important. I don't know how much they think you're going to be able to get money behind it, let's put it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other announcements?
I do, I do think years ago, state parks took out based upon snowmobile registration, so many gallons of gasoline for a snowmobile registered in the state of North Dakota. I don't know if they still do that, but that would be an idea they could do with their votes. How many registered boats are in North Dakota, based fifty gallons a year or whatever?
They do have that, they got that A and S sticker announced last legislative session to put some funding in towards this A and S prevention, and I think that's where the cost of these wash stations will initially be coming from. But like Adam said, you're right too, is the ongoing maintenance and cost of them is pretty unknown. So they have a few dollars dedicated to it, but not enough.
Not anywhere near.
Not anywhere near, close to, to dedicate them on permanent basis.
Got to get some other two companies announced, so. I mean, they're benefiting from it, a lot of, like, sure, I'm local.
I have no other announcements. Adam, anything else?
Next meeting's on Thursday?
Next, next meeting is November fifth, sorry, Thursday?
Fifth.
Yes.
Sorry. My calendar's off a little bit.
Thursday.
Yep. Unless you can hold me to-
No, no, we're not gonna do that.
No, I need to leave right now.
Anybody else? All right. With that, adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for coming. See everybody on the fifth of November.